And we're live.
Welcome to the July 2nd, 2025, Meeting of the Line Planning Board. This meeting will come to order. This is a public proceeding and unless the board specifically votes to go into executive session, you have the right to hear everything that is being said and to look at all the exhibits that have been offered. If the board votes to go into executive session, the reasons shall be stated. Please notify the board chair if you are having difficulty seeing or hearing. This meeting is being digitally recorded and broadcast on YouTube. In each instance, it is incumbent upon the applicant to demonstrate compliance with the provisions of the applicable ordinance or ordinances. The board votes on the merits of each project and will prepare a written opinion which will be forwarded within seven days. The board works from a prepared agenda and will consider this meeting. The meeting items in the following order. Roll call. Number one, Brian Dan Costas, 1713 Alpha Grove, map 7 lot 64, commercial development. Commercial buildings with garage area for vehicles or storage and office space. Review site walk as of 6:2825. Public hearing will be held on 7/16/25. Kyle Brooks Estate, map 4 lot 22, final subdivision plan review. 2024-2025, third and fourth quarter reports. Set the agenda for public hearings and meetings on 7/1625. Review them in minutes and look at old business, which is hyper residential subdivision. Tax map 3 lot 78-3 and a portion of tax map 3 lot 78-87 not 78, pardon me. Old Kennamont Park Road, nine residential lots, final subdivision allocation accepted, reviewed. York County Soil and Water Report. This time I invite you to join me in saluting the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The law makes you wait. All right, can we start a roll call to my right?
Tim Revard, Fort Farm Road, Lyman.
William Single, Single Lake. Kelly Demers, Ken Partridge Way.
Kevin Vare, 64, Buggin Up Pond Road.
And we have quorum and a full board member. Can we have Brian Dan Costas, 1713 Alpha Grove? Thank you for showing up today.
Thank you for showing up today.
Any other changes since the last time you came before us?
So last time we had the horse track in the middle?
Yes.
Todd has submitted the new plan.
Okay, that's the difference.
That's the only difference.
That's the only difference?
Yep.
Unfortunately, we didn't have enough for quorum on the site plan.
Site walk.
A site walk, thank you. My mind is.
It's okay.
Now, one of the things in reviewing the subdivision, actually Kevin, I'll let you speak on that.
Yes, actually, in our zoning ordinance, it says that a site walk may be deemed required by the planning board. And I will make a motion to waive the requirement for a rescheduled site walk due to the lack of quorum. We went through, it was published, the public did show up, the public had some questions. I believe everything was covered that needed to be covered. And if there's any further public input, it would be at the public hearing anyways. So I make a motion that we do not require a rescheduled site walk for this project.
I'll second that. Do we have any discussion? You guys went, there were no surprises, not everything was.
Very straightforward.
Would you be opposed if any of the other planning board members happened to be going by, stopping, take a peek at it?
Go for it. My son lives there. I'll just text him and let him know someone might be walking around. I'll just, if one of you can let me know, just to let him know, just some sort of random people.
As Kevin stated, it was pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Went in, everything was flagged out, there was stakes everywhere, orange flagging. He went over, he discussed his proposed plan, which was for the location of the office building and the two other large buildings. Once the first office building was erected, the current existing structure he's planning on removing.
Right.
And whichever way you see fit, with potential for having it, someone buying it, moving it, moving off. The large proposed uncovered gravel storage in the back was all flagged out. He pointed out where the proposed septic system was going to be. It's flat, the area is flat. You can look at and you see the tree line way back there. So that's my two cents, that's my analysis of the site walk that we took. So you guys have any questions?
No, we went over the DOT permit and the.
That's all been approved.
That's all been approved.
Everything's good there. We talked about Casella, remember the dumpsters and all that? So I'm still working through that with them because a little nervous, like one contractor might overtake the dumpster compared to another contractor that doesn't need the dumpster. So we're still talking about that and I do have, we're going to place that in the lease agreements as far as. We're not going to get 12 individual dumpsters, that's kind of asinine, but someone, we're going to have cameras on it and regulate who's dumping as much as, you know, the rest of them, basically. It needs to be open for everyone still. So and it shouldn't smell because there's no household trash there. That's another thing Casella brought up to me. It'll be a one, once a week clean out, but they're working out, we might, they have dumpsters that are like what we have at the town dump for recycling.
Yep.
So each unit would have its own little bay, you know, that kind of thing. So we'll see. I think I'm overthinking it a little bit, but I think they're also, they've seen this before. So I'm waiting for that person to get back from vacation.
Okay.
To go over it with me, the commercial person that does that stuff.
And sight line up and down the street. It's probably one of the best I think we've seen in a long time. That with the addition of potential new stoplight, red light at the corner. I mean, it didn't, it didn't take me that long to get out.
Now, and we, we, we're on the outside of the bend, so you see further and we have sight line at the 50 mile an hour now. So if they put the light in, it's going to slow things down even more, which is even better.
Yep. Do we have any more discussion on not requiring a second site walk? Hearing no more discussion requiring a second site walk. All in favor? All opposed? We will not be requiring a second site walk or we did, again, we did have public input, so.
Yep.
Which was great, always good to have a public show up.
So our next meeting, I think, is on.
In two weeks.
Yeah, and that would be the public hearing.
The public hearing on the 16th.
Yeah.
Do we have to go through any checklists for that?
For this one?
Oh, thank you.
I can't remember, I think we reviewed the application.
There's this. I don't think we went through the first.
Just want to make sure everything's complete before the public hearing.
Yes, we did.
We did the whole checklist.
That's right.
Yes, we did.
I couldn't remember. That's good. I think we're all set then.
So I think we're all set till the 16th?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming in. Nice to see you all prepared to hand. We need to catch a funny one. This is this.
Do you want to let me know that? I thought we brought a check in for 350.
They didn't miss. On 21st, you dropped a check.
Yeah, so we're all set. I think we mentioned something about, I'm going to check it out. Maybe it's something I have to bring in. I don't know.
I don't know. Come on, they can answer you. All right.
Thank you.
You have a question?
Have a good one.
You as well.
Kyle Brooks Estate.
Hi.
How are we doing today?
Good. Isaiah Plank with Timber Surfer and Design. Eric Sari from Altis Engineering cannot be here tonight, so you got me and you got Troy. We'll just have to. So same proposals last time, the four lots, I think we kind of went over everything for the eliminated that other back lot. Three lots up of Kennamont Park Lane and the other one will be accessed up of Walker Road, as noted on the plan, requiring that. We have submitted the final application, gave the young lady, and we're asking for a final approval.
There were some changes made. And some waivers requested.
Yeah, there was the waiver for the soil and water that just never got back to us. But that's covered under the engineer stamp and.
And one bit of things. Quite a few waiver requests. One of them was for having no homeowners association.
Was that a formal waiver request? Did you put that in there? We don't have one. We have a just a road maintenance agreement to cover all of that because it's really pretty simple. And they could be in the deed restrictions anyway, so.
Subdivision standards. And that's just to protect the owner to all the properties. There's the.
811, this page.
811. 8.11. 8.11 is no water sewer.
8.11, please.
Oh, way down here. Homeowners Association is not opposed to this subdivision, but we do require, I do believe. Homeowners Association, page 39. Refer to the requirements of 8.11, homeowners association. Subdivision. Why does that not make sense?
Do you want to see what we do have prepared?
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be wonderful.
So basically, there's a road maintenance and potential bond agreement, maintenance agreement. And then this is the declaration of pebbles and restrictions. So it's the same effect, just not calling it that, but we can rename it.
Because typically your CCs and Rs are part of your homeowners association and all this gets filed with, with the county.
Put like three homes in the road. I think you need five for board, right? For HOA?
Nope, three.
No?
As long as there's two, two stand up, they have a quorum. It doesn't have to be very detailed. This basically would be, you know, combined with the declarations, your CCs and Rs, you know, the restrictions that it can't be further subdivided or whatever else.
Yeah.
And that is part of your homeowners association and part of the homeowners association, you put in your road maintenance agreement and they're tied together. So if you just put that, take a look at that. And that was very simple.
Yeah, I think all the ingredients are there. We'll just do that as a condition, maybe we'll just.
Right, and then, you know, put in something that, you know, the homeowners meet once a year. They can barbecue in the backyard and it can be very simple. It doesn't have to be, you know, long drawn out. You know, they can elect the president, vice president, treasure something that small, they may, may not want to have money set aside for, you know, fixing the mutual road or just whatever else, so.
Where this is so small, there's only three lots on it because we have to take a waiver.
There's four lots.
Only three lots on the right away, though, is what I'm saying.
Right.
So the fourth lot is not part of that road maintenance agreement because they're not fronting on it.
Correct.
Could we entertain a waiver in lieu of road maintenance agreements and the declaration that we write?
It'd be just adding, stating that, you know, lot two, three, and four part of the road maintenance agreements, you know, lot one is exempt from.
Which is all in that agreement.
Yeah, so it's, same needs to be said, but put it together a little more.
Well, that's what we put in there.
Right.
And that's going to be part of everybody's deed, so it will be covered.
Yeah.
We just didn't feel like it was, it's just not a big subdivision.
No. I've done some that are 447 pages, wasn't it?
Oh, geez. That seems unnecessary for this.
It's all the worse.
Yeah, one of the worst pleasures, I guess we prefer a waiver and just go with this.
Really, it's homeowners association. Yeah, that's what it is.
It's all there, it's just not called. Only difference.
By having an association, at least you have somebody that you can go to to say, hey, I get an issue here. And without it, it leaves it really open as to who's responsible for what.
Well, I think that agreement does spell out who's responsible. They're all responsible, one third, one third, one third.
Yeah.
And it does.
All the force.
Yeah.
The challenge, I don't say challenge, but the, when you've got to do a formal HOA for this few homes, you've got British River State, there's a lot of expenses, you've got to file it with the state every year. If they miss it, you know, then it's not a good standard of state. It can create unnecessary problems for just three homes when you can have everything accomplished with the covenants restrictions and road maintenance agreements.
And that would be part of everybody's deeds, and I would be very clear.
But again, it's incumbent upon the owner. Once they buy in, they know what they're getting into, they know they're buying into an HOA, they know they will be responsible. So let's say owner number three slacks off because you have that formal HOA document, not just the road maintenance agreement, not just the CCRs, because they have the legal authority, right, because there's an HOA. You know.
I think, and I think if you read it, it does spell that out.
Yeah.
If we, if we put HOA on the top of it, it would be the same net effect, but this is just a simpler method to include it in a deed. So it's, I'd say it's preferable for us if we could keep it that way, but.
Talk to me, Kevin. Talk to me, board. What's your thoughts, opinions, questions, queries?
I think at a minimum that the, what they've presented needs to be reviewed by the town attorney. Whether it's a formal homeowners association or a bylaws road maintenance.
My big thing is when I look at, this says refer to 8.11, and that just a subdivision that are above full playing level.
It's 8.11, goes to page 29.
So they put a decimal point in the wrong place. That's why I'm going, this doesn't make sense. Yeah, page 29, 8.11. Homeowners Association, an organization comprised of all the owners of the homes in the development slash subdivision designated as a homeowners association shall be responsible for the maintenance of all open spaces, areas, and other common facilities in the development subdivision. Two, homeowners association must be formed and the bylaws of the homeowners association must specify maintenance responsibilities for the development. Open space, if any, the bylaws must be reviewed by the planning board and the town attorney and any necessary changes made prior to the planning board's approval for the development. All owners of lots within the development shall be required to be members of the homeowners association. Each lot deed in the development shall include covenants setting forth the requirements of membership in the association, together with the rights and interest in any open spaces and common facilities. Covenants shall be reviewed and approved by the planning board and the town attorney. There shall be a note including in the subdivision plan setting forth the requirements of the membership in the homeowners association. Number four, the homeowners association shall be responsible for maintaining any open space or any other common facilities, including sanitary water systems, water storage, distribution systems, and underground storage facilities for fire protection. Number five, the developer shall be a member of the homeowners association and responsible for each unsold unit in the cluster development. The developer's membership in the association may be terminated once all the lots are sold by sending written notice to the line and planning board in the association stating that all lots are sold, along with the date and last sale and the names of the new owner owners. Homeowners Association must levy fees against any property owners due to free expenses connected with the maintenance of undeveloped land and other common or recreational facilities and easements.
Is that under the cluster subdivision regulations or?
No, this is just.
You mentioned cluster.
That was just one thing, but it does not give us any leeway. It is a may, will, shall, shall. So, and it very specifically states it on on four of the six requirements.
Okay.
So it's.
Yeah, if we could do that as a condition of approval, that'd be great, just like.
Yep. So that's, again, it's, the legal word is very important in these cases, so. It's not a may, it's not a might, it's a shall. And I was reading and looking for a waiver. Trying to find the exact wording. This, okay, there it is. This is on the letter stating, May 7, 2025, to the planning board. Backlot request Kyle Brooks. Dear members of the board, on behalf of the upcoming Kyle Brooks Estate LLC, Altis Engineering respectfully submits a request for the creation of backlots as part of the above referenced project in accordance with section 817 of line, lineman land development and subdivision standards. We offer the following to support the request. Eight seven. Eight seven sewage. Or is that eight seventeen? Eight seventeen. I'm not seeing. Did we lose an eight seventeen? We go from eight eleven to nine. Anyway. While there exists adequate land area that would allow the design to meet the minimum required road frontage, there are unique circumstances inherent in the lot that prohibit the extension of the possible right of way, specifically the topography, the presence of ledge presents significant obstacles in constructing a road compliant with town standards. Number two, the use of backlots will allow for significant less impact in a natural environment. As the proposed right of way will be much shorter than would be otherwise required. The extension of the road would also entail a large amount of blasting which would, can be avoided under the proposed design. The area in question is nearly 35 acres in size, which would have, which would be significant for almost seven house lots. The applicant is proposing only three. The use of backlots are in, in no way allows for the circumvent circumvention of the regulations as all dimension requirements other than the road frontage are met. The proposed includes only two backlots, one less than the maximum permitted by the regulations. We hope the board will see fit to grant our request. And always available if you have any questions and need any additional information, so. You're not looking to shorten what you have there now.
No, this is what we're doing. Yeah, that's it. I haven't reviewed it. Does the, it meet the road standards? And again, I had to turn around and spec.
Hmm, yes. Yeah.
Basically, they are reducing the length of the road.
Right, from.
In the frontage.
From prior.
Right, which will reduce the impervious surface and all that.
Yeah.
Again, the amount of blasting has been.
We've actually dropped the number of lots.
Yeah, because first one, you had a road come in much farther down.
No, that's another missing decimal point. It's on page 21.
I'm going. Where is this?
It starts on 21.
22.
It's in the four, I guess.
So which lots the back on?
So these two will be back lots as they come off of here. This one is now. The 307.
Oh, okay.
But this one does.
Right. It's technically two back lots. Instead of trying to reconfigure and give sufficient road frontage to one, it can only create one back lot. I thought we could only give one back lot.
No, you could.
No, up to three. Up to three.
The one is only off of like an existing right of way or something, or something like that.
Yeah. Eight one seven four, it says three back lots maximum. Now is that? Eight dot one dot seven. Section four. Yeah, one dot seven. No more than three. Perfect. Julie, you got anything to chime in?
I'm tired.
This heat gets everyone ridiculous. All right. Can we say we needed another public hearing due to significant changes from the original plan?
I don't think so.
No.
I don't think so.
Okay.
We almost approved this last time. We just didn't have the final application in front of you, so we technically had to wait.
Yeah, these changes are in response to the public hearing.
Okay. Well, public hearing was on a sixth lot. This is now four. Understandable.
Yes, the concern of the public hearing was the flooding, things like that, which we explained.
And reduced traffic on Kyle.
Reducing the number of lots has, I believe, in response to some of that, for the betterment.
I think the biggest concerns were use of Kyle Brook Road by existing landowners and their redesign says no no road access or driveways or street access.
In the covenants and the restrictions, should the residential fire suppression systems be mentioned?
You mean?
The requirement. It's all the plan. Okay, it's not in the covenants.
Yeah, so the.
Yeah, so the deed is, the plan will be incorporated in the deed, so it's, it's all part of it, so they have to go by everything on the plan, so.
Right, because they got.
That acts as one unit. Okay, it's on that page. Yeah.
I think that's going to come under the building permit.
Right, and that's a condition. We're talking about the sprinkler systems in the houses.
Yeah.
Right, that would be one of the conditions of approval is go with sprinkler systems at the strong historical urging of the fire chief. Because a sprinkler system can give you X amount of time of active fire suppression.
Yeah, but what I was saying is that we're going to have to get a building permit. That'll be a requirement.
Okay, yes, absolutely.
We didn't have any time to review these is why I'm trying.
Oh, don't worry.
Since you changed it.
Yep.
Yeah, because usually we'll get them several days in advance, which gives us each several hours at home to go. What comes to mind, drop down little notes and.
Yeah, we had, we had presented this plan at the last meeting, and I think that the drainage analysis and the supporting information hasn't changed because it's the same whether it's six lots or five lots or four lots, but yeah, this is the formal plan.
Yeah. Haven't had a chance to go through. This one presented the latest. So you can have a seat for.
Eric dropped them off yesterday.
Yeah.
And so nobody's really had time to read through it and look at all the pretty pictures.
Been all night.
Unfortunately, we don't.
Guys, if you want to have a seat while we peruse this, because the last one we want to do is jump ahead of something and get caught.
And unfortunately, we may have to come back one more time, just.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just to give them time to digest it all.
Many times what's changed from our last meeting?
We don't know.
That's what, that's what we're trying to figure.
Right, it's.
We knew the road was changing and we knew you went to four lots.
Right.
All, all the backup documentation we didn't, we weren't able to review.
And was all the waivers.
That's been there for two weeks now. That's been there for two weeks now, like what that is. The only thing that changed was we took out the back lot, which was lot five, at the request. So we did review all of this stormwater calculations. Everything is the same as the last meeting. Literally, we just dropped one lot at the request because of the access to Kyle Brook Road, so nothing's really changed. That's I'm concerned.
Yeah, one of the things that's added is all the answers, questions, rebuttals, requests for waivers on the final subdivision plan, which you put in here, which.
Yeah, you need to read all those off for us. I'll play the water for you.
Got water, got cough drops, eyesight's going, magnifying glass. After, you've probably heard me go a little dry after reading through all those things. Julie, does Rebecca have any questions, comments, queries, input?
I will go check with her.
Thank you.
I don't have my phone for them.
We need a little pager for her or one of those, those call. Okay, that's this one, which is the new one, which has got all this. Nothing from Rebecca or?
She said no, not at this time.
Do you have the CCs and Rs? Covenants, conservation, restrictions? You need it?
No. Read the last law on the last page.
You might, we have a couple copies.
Oh, yeah, there. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, that's standard, small ones like this. On your CCs and Rs, number eleven, rubbish disposal, no trash, ash, or other refuse, junk vehicles in disrepair, or brushwood shall be kept or permitted on any lot except in sanitary containers concealed from public view, accepting a small compost pile, maybe contained so long as it is reasonable in size and appearance. Typically, one will see that there should be a minimum number, a maximum number of vehicles on the property or restrictions of unregistered vehicles. I think the town ordinance itself says no, you can't have any more than three unregistered vehicles. It'd be nice to put in there, you know, no, no unreg, no unregistered vehicles beyond, you know, max.
Yeah, I mean, they'll have to comply with all town requirements anyway, so.
I just see that a lot, you know, only so many.
Yeah. As well, I'm not the collector's card.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we just wanted to put up my, by all town regulations and ordinances.
Yep. And number fourteen has twenty-year severability. That's, that's average, it's standard. That's not outside the normal realm of an HOA CC and AR. I didn't see, no further subdivision.
That was on the plan.
Would be on the plan, but typically they'll state it in there because that way they have three years down the road, ten years down the road. Oh, I just want to break this parcel off of my kid, you know, and then another ten years down, oh, I want to break a parcel off of my grandkid.
Once it's recorded, any change has to come before the board anyway, so they can't just divide it on their own.
You'd be surprised what they.
Well, that's not legal. We can't even keep you from many crimes.
Yes, you do. You put out no stealing signs. Works every time. Don't they know stealing's illegal? Anything else from the board?
Nothing else that jumps out at me.
Bill?
We're just reviewing the deeds for now, because I have some issues with the waiver request.
Yeah. Which one? Oh, which one's you bringing up? Which paperwork you have there? Oh, the CCs and Rs, except they got seasonars. Covenants, conservations, and restrictions.
Now you get technical.
It's the terminology I use every day.
I'm going to roll the hands if you want to.
What questions you have?
Um, waiver request, seven point two.
Seven point two. Now is that seven point two or seven two point two or?
Seven point two.
Yep.
Basically, they don't want any performance guarantee for the road construction. Or cost estimating for anything we've done to previous submissions.
Trying to get to the right book.
Yes, yes, that's the, is that mine yours?
Page fifteen.
Shall.
But the waiver request states, since this is not public improvements, the performance guarantee is not required, do not believe is the case.
Because they're asking who, basically a right of way.
I think what Eric was saying was it's a private right of way and it's, it's two hundred and thirty feet, so it's going to be, by the time we put up the performance guarantee, this thing's going to be built out of pocket, so.
Yeah, we're looking out for, we're looking out for the town's interests, though.
Understood.
All of the subdivisions, which are private codes, we don't have any new subdivision for public roads.
Not yet.
I thought that was like outlawed like twenty years ago.
If they, if they were to build to public road standards and then complete it, and then the association votes that they want to approach the municipality, it leaves it open. Has it happened? Not in a long time, but it's possible. Yeah, I know what you're saying. And I'm leaning to agree.
Yeah, at a minimum, I'm curious about the cost estimate for the construction.
Does minimally require cross sections of the roads.
That's all, that's, it's all.
And all that, which is going to be up to. Yes.
The price we've had so far, the most than a hundred thousand.
Shall. There's that word again. Schedule value. Don't think that is one of the things we could waiver because it is a shall word. Nor a may, or has the option to. Good catch, Kevin.
Because doing the waiver would take away the town leverage.
Yeah.
And I understand it may be a short amount of time, but that shouldn't be a big deal to you at that point.
Yeah.
Because then, then onus is on you to get it done, so you can collect your money back.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, certainly. I mean, I could, we could pay it upfront. We've done that before. And when we're done, right of ways like this, typically the towns have put down, it's different from a road, but I understand it's a matter of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we like to see people succeed and go ahead and do the things, but there's ordinances, rules, and regulations and words we have to follow.
Yep.
So. How does the board want to proceed? Do we think we need a little more time? Because there's a lot of things that some of us are picking up here near Southern, picking it up here. I hate to, I hate to delay it, but I don't think we've had time to look at particularly all the requested waivers and the notation saying, I mean, I'm just using eight point five sidewalks. Yeah, understandable, but there's just a lot going on being reviewed. Right now, I think we need to take some time on our own to just. Right now, I think we need to take some time on our own to just put our eyes on it and look at it.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I guess I'd just like a list of things that we would come in here, we'd have what you need.
Well, that's the things we haven't had a chance to, to sit and review, because I was going through both the prior, one page by page. And I'm nuts, it was very well put together, but just pages after pages of the list checklist. Some things were checked, others were changed to not applicable, and I looked, and I swam it, this is, this is applicable. We got to put my notation. Again, the thing was, was the homeowners association, it is applicable, because it's a shall. So, and that's just us going back, reviewing each one and saying, is it required? Yes. Is it not required? No. Because there's eight pages of this that has to go through and be all checked and reviewed. So. I'll obtain a motion that we continue on July 16th, take some time to review and look at this, so that we have a full understanding of all the essentials and non-essentials. The request for waivers. Makes sense? I don't want to hold them up, but I don't want to rush through anything that could potentially put the town in jeopardy later on down the road, or start a precedence that someone out of either ignorance on a part of a procedure, that we'd go, wait a minute, we haven't fully looked, or something that's- We got a motion seconded, discussion, so that we, you know, this is a simple one, but some down the road, we could have an 18, 20-unit subdivision, and they want to get a waiver, well, you did it on this one.
No, understood, and I have a list of what I think I heard want buttoned up here. If there's anything else while you are reviewing it, there's a way to let us know, we'd rather address it.
Agreed, yeah.
Was there any other waivers coming, so?
Um, I was just starting to go through them, because there was-
Yeah, I will say a waiver on the backlot, that's a big one, so if that's a no, I'd like to know.
Yeah.
So.
Uh, three pages of, some of them were waivers, some of them were not applicable. To review why it's not applicable. Is it not applicable because it doesn't pertain to the subdivision, or is it not applicable because it's something that the ordinance says we can waiver? Yeah. Differences. I'm just throwing out, 7.5.1, not applicable, no open spaces proposed as this part of the project. It's all private land, you're not putting in a cluster subdivision, giving that. But that just gives us something that we got to stop and look at, though. Is it applicable or not applicable?
Right, and I think Eric took his stab at it.
Yes, I mean, I'm looking, this is, all this spelled out is great and wonderful, we didn't have time to review it before we got here today, so.
I, I do have another question. It was talking about DEP approval for anything over 30 acres. And I remember the discussion on that, but this is what, 37 acres?
Yeah, it's not, it's not over 30 acres, that's Site Location on Development Act, and that's 15 lots and over 30 acres, so we don't have 15 lots, so it doesn't trigger that.
Our ordinance doesn't-
Says occupies a land area in excess of 30 acres.
That's your ordinance?
I know, it's, that's how the ordinance reads, that caught me up on this project or another one, too. I brought it up, because it is, there's nothing for them to approve, because there's no wetland impacts, so.
Usually, they want to approve those things, when there's nothing to approve.
Yeah.
Approval, approval.
That we agree on.
Bureaucracy.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I agree, Bill. It's in the ordinance, but the-
I think that's a typo, and it should say 15 lots and 30, because that's how the site law reads.
Which page you want, which ordinance? Shoreland, 7.1.
Unless that's commercial. Is there something else in there?
I think you're-
For subdivision.
That hung me up on this project.
13.
Yeah, I think I remember you mentioning.
Page 13, yep.
Yeah, some things in our ordinance are not accurate, like the soil and water, the main soil and water conservation district that does not exist.
That's why these are living, breathing documents, and sometimes, things fall between the cracks and are only brought to our attention when someone says, wait a minute, this is- But this, this. Final plan for subdivision, other approvals. Approval of the final subdivision plan by the main Department of Environmental Protection is required if the subdivision occupies a land area in excess of 30 acres, or involves a structure or structures having in excess of 60,000 square feet of ground area coverage, or requires a permit from the main Department of Environmental Protection under some other regu-, I like that, some other regulations such as waste discharge or air quality, or in any other way falls within the jurisdiction of, or jurisdiction of, and is subject to the review of the main Department of Environmental Protection. Approval of the main Department of Environmental Protection shall be secured in writing before official subdivision of the final subdivision plan. That does not give us any room for any leeway.
Well, so.
It's clear, clear as mud.
Yeah.
Clear as mud, but it doesn't, I understand-
So she wants to request a waiver for that, because like, they literally can't approve anything. We can go to them and find out that they, there's nothing to approve.
And if you can come back with something from the Department of Environmental Protection that says, based on your plan, your subdivision plan, we have nothing to approve as it does not fall under that number of units. So, this, again, this is something our ordinance needs to change, but we have to follow the ordinance.
Or waive it.
Yeah. It says not one that gives us the allowance to waive. Is required.
Well, so is the soil and water approval, and we're going to, we're asking for waiver of that, because it don't exist, so there's-
They do exist, because I called. I mean, nobody, I left a message.
Well, okay, there's numbers that nobody's had. We can go back and forth, but we've tried repeatedly to get through to them, and we're asking for a waiver of that, so it's sort of the same thing. We just, we just got to find a way to navigate through this stuff, because we're being asked to do things that we can't do, so. If there was an DEP permit, we'd certainly get it, but there just isn't.
I know what you're saying. And if it, it said occupies land in excess of 30 acres or so many units, great. That would give us the out, because it's not so many units. Our ordinance doesn't say that.
Could you get a legal opinion from the town attorney?
That would be great and wonderful, I think.
Yeah, but it might take forever.
No, Eric-
Could we get a legal opinion?
He's, yeah, he's, he's been very good lately.
Okay.
I render, because there's been several instances when we were like-
I mean, we're back here in two weeks, that's why.
Yeah, well, I, Julie, how long do you, how, he hasn't taken that long. Usually, it's, if we have, if we pose him a question-
Usually, but it's, I mean, maybe next week we have-
It's 4th of July, he can tell.
That's what we need, yeah.
Yeah.
This, this week's pretty much over.
I know.
Done. Yeah.
Brad-
What am I asking?
Is-
What's the specific section?
7.1.1. In Living Planning Board Land Development and Subdivision Standards, page 13, Article 7, 7.1.1 DEP approval.
So if it does not require a DEP permit, it's not-
If it's something that we can legally hang a hat on to say, by this, you know, we're not going to require it, because it is, it's more, it's more stringent than state requirements, which they allow us to be more strict. We cannot go easier than state requirements. Yeah. But we can't be more lenient than state requirements.
I don't even think that's a state requirement, so.
That rule, yeah, I, it's the first time we've had, anything over this was, has always come back with a DEP, you know, documents. It's kind of odd that it's-
It's partly because of how few homes are out here. Usually, you've got that many acres, you don't want to-
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if we go four homes, you know, 40 acres.
So, I think I, I think I have the list of approval on Harper, right?
Yeah, that was-
And that's nine.
Yeah, nine.
But there could have been a wetland impact, or a stormwater permit.
That one, that one had a lot of wetland, wetland impact.
When, when the roads get larger, they can require a stormwater permit, or where there's wetland impacts, but we shrunk this down so much, we don't have any wetland impacts that, trying to make it work.
And we're trying to work with it, but it's, we've got to follow the rules.
No, I, I think, so I, I've got, I've drawn it down, what I think the concerns are, that I think we can address and resubmit. And then I would just say, as you go through it, if there's something that you see that we hadn't talked about, if there's a way to-
Yeah, we can email Julie, and go, hey, you know?
So we can button this sucker up for the next one.
Yep.
That's all we can do, so.
Because, again, we don't want to delay you, but we don't want to push through something that could be a violation.
Yeah.
And come back and get, tie everyone up in court for years, and the last thing we need is that.
You said Brad Warren, the town attorney?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, okay, he is pretty good, I'll get him right back.
Okay, so, well, you've got everything that we've drawn it down so far. And if the board goes, reviews these, and if proposed not applicables, waivers, or comments for the review, we'll send Julie an email saying, hey, I happen to notice on XYZ, this is what it stated, however, I find it in conflict or don't agree with it with this part of the ordinance. That one we planned? That one we planned? All right, we'll see you on the 60th.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we've been clear as mud and tried to express the complexity of what we- Thank you for your patience with us. Okay. 634. Okay. This, 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 this. That was here. Do you, do you have a contact with DEP? Or someone you can call?
I, the only DEP person Rebecca's called is the Shoreland DEP person. I called York County Soil and Water, it's in Springdale. I left a message and said, these people are trying to get ahold of you, they haven't received a call back, I would like to speak to somebody. They didn't call me back either.
Didn't, I know Harper, Rob. Yeah, Harper.
Yes, Har-
Didn't they finally get through to them?
Yeah, because we got there.
Yes, so it just takes them a while to get around to it, to get back, I should say.
But DEP, if we were to call them and say, hey, if a subdu-
I don't know who you were talking to, I don't know why that, if you're supposed to contact York County Soil and Water, and their message says, if we're not answering the phone, we're working from home.
The last time I called, they're open from 9 to 5, but only take calls from 9 to 12. Figure that out.
Okay.
Well, they're working from home.
So, I just wondered, I mean, they asked that question, if a subdivision is over 30 acres, do you need to give approval?
Yeah.
In yes or no, you know what I mean?
Yeah, because-
Regardless of the number of lots.
Yeah, right. I mean, our, our ordinance clearly states, there's no mention of number of lots, therefore-
Yeah, but I, I think the discussion was before on it, was that the disturbed part of the property is very small compared to the overall 37 acres, therefore, it didn't apply. Now I kind of question that answer, only because of what it says in the ordinance.
Yeah. And that's what we have to do, is interpret. We don't interpret, we enforce the ordinance. We are, there are certain areas, we are left to our interpretation, such as really requirement for a second sidewalk. It's one of those may.
No, we need clarification, either attorney or DEP.
I hate to delay, but I don't want to-
Well, I was just thinking, if we call DEP and they say, no, that's fine, then we say, going to the town attorney, cost is what I'm looking at, that's all I was thinking.
Something in writing.
Well, yeah.
Right, so that, it's in the file, here it is.
Yeah.
Do our best to act white.
Yeah, is the burden on us to?
Exactly. You know, that's why we have required surveys to be, you know, registered surveyors, because it's not a crayon drawing, that we go, oh, that looks good, that's close. That we can hang jingle on. All right, do we want to move on to the 24, 25, third and fourth quarter reports?
Of course you do.
Of course we do.
They're beautiful.
I think so.
It's, did a lot of work.
All right, Town Living Planning Board Quarterly Report, Third Quarter Fiscal Year 24, 25. Oh, we did, Harper Residential, worked on Harper Residential subdivision map 3, lot 87-3, and a portion of lot 87-2, which was proposed nine-lot subdivision, we, and we're doing the final on that. Daniel Makwa, 135 Shore Road, map 17, lot 57, best practice location. Then we had Jenna Salvo, 549 Clarkswood Road, map 5, lot 001, proposed all at-home daycare. And we worked with the Bunganut Town Parks Committee, 224 Brock Road, map 2, lot 10, proposed three permanent docks. Then Patricia Gagnon, 54 Wilderness Way, map 3, lot 33, proposed state vehicle inspection station primarily-
That would be Patrick, not Patricia.
I'm tired. I don't do well in the heat. Patrick, my apologies, I do apologize. Patrick Gagnon, 54 Wilderness Way, map 3, lot 33, proposed state vehicle inspection station primarily for his landscaping vehicles, company vehicles. Held a discussion on the permanent dock, planning board purview versus temporary dock code enforcement, purview, review, planning board administrative policies, mission statements, bylaws. Do we have a motion to accept the third quarter fiscal year 24, 25?
So moved.
Motion, we've got a second, any discussion?
No.
All in favor? All opposed? Approved, and I'll sign it now.
Who's second is that?
Bill.
Thank you.
I have no issues with the fourth quarter report.
So moved.
Thank you, I have to reading. Do we have any discussion on approving the Living Planning Board Quarterly Report, Fourth Quarter Fiscal Year 24, 25? Here, no discussion, and all in favor?
Right.
All opposed? Approved unanimously, and signed. Okay. Do we want to review the minutes before we set the agenda, or do you want to set the agenda and then review the minutes? I have a motion to do something.
To do the agenda, which I very nicely-
A proposed agenda.
Put one together for all of you.
Well, I thank you for setting up a proposed potential agenda.
I was very, very efficient. This is our agenda, proposed for next meeting. This is our agenda, proposed for next meeting. You roll up.
So seeing this proposed agenda and nothing else coming before, I presume this is all we have for the proposed agenda, which will be the roll call. Public hearing on Brian Dankos, 1713 Alfred Road, map seven, lot 64, commercial development, commercial buildings with garage area for vehicle, vehicles or storage and office space. After that, I have a regular meeting, which will be bringing Diane, Brian Dankors back up for the development of the garage. Then the second one will be Carlisle Brook, map four, lot 22. The final application, stormwater received, applicant. Final application has not been received yet.
You scribble out the not, it has been received.
Final application received. Love it. Then we'll set the agenda for the next meeting, which will be August 6, 2025. Review the minutes. And all businesses, Harper subdivision. I'll entertain a motion that this be the proposed uh, agenda for the July 16th meeting unless something comes about, comes up. Bill seconds, any more discussion? All in favor? This will be the minutes. Wonderful, for the agenda. So the agenda has been set, that's been done. Onto the minutes. You all have the minutes from the May 21st planning board public hearing and May 21st planning board. Do we want to take them individually or combine them together? The public hearing and the meeting.
Well, they have to be signed separately, so.
Okay, so we'll do them separately. I'll entertain a motion that we approve the town alignment planning board public hearing minutes for May 21st, 2025 as presented. We got a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimously approved.
I missed the whole thing.
I motioned, Kevin seconded. All right. Town and Lot Planning Board Meeting Minutes for May 21st, 2025. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented.
Yep.
Kevin seconds, do we have any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Unanimous approval.
I'm still working on the June minutes.
And I'm sure you were doing a phenomenal job.
Trying.
He is doing a phenomenal job.
Do this, I have to assign this. I love it that I get these nice little posters to sign originally.
That was all because of Rod.
Was it?
Yep, because he would lose track of the, the the minutes. They would be signed and then they'd be mixed in with people's papers. So I put the stickies on them.
Brilliant, I tell you, simply brilliant.
It was brilliant.
Oh, did I miss one?
That's that, that's that, those.
And then you brilliantly said the folder works, great to keep them all together.
Yes, it does, because if you notice, I'm putting everything with signatures back in that folder. So that I don't accidentally.
Mix them all up and take them home with you.
Right.
We are such a work in progress.
Yes, but we're making progress, that's the thing.
Always moving forward. I have, before you gentlemen leave, the, um, revised subdivision from Thark Moore's Land Swat. You have to sign and drop that off. Someone should volunteer to write the notice of decision for the, we have to have a notice of decision for that?
No, we just. I'll reach back, which one of those again?
That was the Land Swat.
Wasn't that, that was Walker, Carlisle Brook?
No, no.
Walker Road, yeah.
That was further up Walker Road that we approved.
Cripple Creek.
Yeah.
Creek, that's right, yeah.
All we needed was the plans with the signature blocks.
That's all you need?
That's all we needed. So.
So this is all you need? Y'all sign it, I call them, they pick it up and file it with the registry?
Yes.
Kevin goes yay.
All right. Do, as it is July, do we want to do the election of officers? Which is typically the month we do our elections in.
Do you want to hold off to try to get some more members?
Well, you're gonna need to fill the vacancy as I'm leaving. I mean, de facto, Bill as vice president automatically moves, uh, vice chair.
President.
Vice president.
Vice president, they go VP.
Vice, hey, you're a vice person anyway.
Do I get a security detail?
Yes. Yes, you do. Uh, as vice chair, you automatically.
I, I kind of like to wait till the next meeting, just so that I can talk with the other two here and we can discuss it.
So be it, that's fine.
See what their interests are, because I don't want to nominate somebody that's not interested.
I don't think we have a choice. All right, so we'll hold off the election till the next meeting, which is the 60th, which will be on the agenda.
Election of officers.
Yep. And nothing new from Harper Residential? Other than we did re, no, we have not re. We did receive it.
Received that DEP thing. Didn't it say that? Say DEP?
Yes.
Were we with Nest?
Haven't heard back from them. No, nothing.
Look like he's trying to build a driveway.
It's kind of interesting because the Nest store is closing.
Yes.
People are all retiring, so they're going to just close up shop.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
On, uh, 35.
35.
My Perkin Street.
Yeah.
They just opened that store.
Wow, it's been a couple of years. But yeah, I know they're all going to retire, so.
My brother lives just down the road, he loves that place. So, it's too bad. Anything else to come before the board? Anything else to come before the board? Anything else to come before?
So we're going to sign some papers. We got to sign that. Let's sign it, and then we can adjourn. And it's still daylight, which is good.
Yes.
He has two copies. Sign them both, please. One is for them to take to the registry, and one is to stay here in their bio.
Just so I can do the second line.
Please and thank you.
She said don't require Mylar anymore.
Seven two.
No.
Seven two. That was horrible.
Is there a reason why they don't require Mylar anymore? I mean, we used to have to have Sharpies and it was like.
I don't think that we've had Mylar since I started.
It's been a while.
Um.
It'll be three years in September.
I was going to say, it's probably been about five.
Actually, I missed it all. I missed all the five.
Because I remember, yeah. Yeah, we had the tables last time, I think I, we had Mylar.
I like the size of these plans, it's easy to read.
See how far away the words go?
Uh, some of them are very hot.
Yep. Okay, that goes there, that goes there. All righty, there you go.
Yep, you're upside down. Go.
The top there.
Yep.
So I will make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, do we have a second? Kevin seconds, here, any discussion? Here, no discussion, all in favor? All opposed? We are closed. Thank you, Bill.
There you go. I will wait for that.
Well, you just have to wait for it till I write it all down.
Fuck it, there's my pocket. I don't know here.
I still have one lot, I bought some three months ago, six months, still got one lot.
I enjoy the taste of beer.